A pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the good will with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, warning everybody, call the meeting to order. Approval of the agenda as written.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Did everybody look over closely the minutes, make sure we had our appointments tracked? I did not.
I looked at mine, I didn't look at yours.
Yeah, I looked at mine, I didn't look at everybody else's.
All ones, I have.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve as printed. There's a change, we'll just have to change it.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And it's approved, general public concerns. Nope.
I'm just wondering, I'm just sure about the drainage deal.
Okay, alright, that's coming up at nine. Did you have anything to add?
She's planning on being here.
Okay.
That's what she said.
Okay. In that case, can we get through our 2020 dash resolution to adopt the master matrix?
Yeah. Did I give you guys the?
I didn't say one.
I didn't say that.
I wrote one real quick for you, so you'll have one.
That's current, one we've always maintained.
Formality.
Yeah.
It makes the state feel better about themselves, the county's always adopted every year. And as Dave, if you want to know, there isn't a ditty thing we can do about it, no.
Somebody just showed up.
If you want, ask company on that way, I'll leave one for Red. The date will need to be changed to today's date. But basically, all it needed to be done, we get a copy from the ISAC staff, and it reads word for word from there, except for the date change. Code section is still the same.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 2020 dash three, adopting the matrix, master matrix. I'll cut it off there.
I'll second.
As required by the state.
State that got their hand and cut behind their back on it, we can't do nothing about it.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Passed. Got it?
I'm not.
She's here.
I am, I made it. Good morning.
You're on time, thank you.
Good morning, good morning, everybody. Shall we start with, what first? We have the swimming pool first.
Beautiful day to swim.
Um, well, it was, the weather was not good for the pool this year, there's no doubt about it. But the tenants, so the tenants was down, admission that way is down. The compression stand basically held itself. Uh, the highlight is that we employed 12 people this year, from Humboldt, Livermore, and Algonah. So, we're employing and we're making things good. The pool, uh, if you know, we lost Nathan. He went to a different job, so we have a new person, so hopefully he can figure out how to handle it. This is good, we lost you to continue to support us. You gave us, you've been giving us 1,600, not a little bit. It matters to us a lot. So if you can, that would be great, consider that on your budget. Do you have any questions?
No.
That's good, we, you know, we have, we have regulars. We have regulars, we have kids that keep them out of trouble, I hope.
Yeah.
I don't think we have any, any of those this year.
Is that a first?
Did you say the pool?
River, you can do that.
Are you going down the garden?
Kent's not, you didn't even put Kent's in there, in there some time.
No, he didn't get out right enough.
Yeah, I can get an attorney before they celebrate a shit of a day, I don't mean that day.
Oh, he's not there.
Oh mercy.
But, but they're hurry this year, so.
Oh wow.
There you go.
They're good. I thought it was the pool.
Well, sure, you're coming, yeah, what's the?
So did you get the letter, and you've all read it, right?
Um, no, I did not give them copies of it, I'm sorry, I was supposed to give them copies.
I should have bought one more copy, that was okay.
But I didn't. I can make some.
That's.
It's not good news.
It's pertaining to the, well, it's not good news?
Mm-hmm, well, not good, well. Um, good news about Pioneer, uh, the discontinuance, the park has been sold now. All the alleys have been vacated and allocated that we can. Those are all taken care of. Um, I've contacted their person who picks up their garbage, and we're gonna have to figure out how they're gonna do that, because the city pays a portion of that, so that will all get taken care of. Street light, I'll leave that up to the person, they'll have to figure that out.
We'll probably adopt two or three on Main Street, any others can be given to the private citizens that want to keep them.
Pay the bill.
Or mid-Americans can take them down.
We have, um, we have changed every single one of them to LED.
Okay.
So they're all LED now, because we figured if they're gonna keep them, it'd be cheaper for the citizens that own the LED.
I think the LEDs actually cost more per month than the standard electric bulbs, but.
Really?
They are more efficient, yeah, that was my argument too, why is it possible?
Really?
So that's sort of counterintuitive for efficiency? They're more efficient, but they cost more.
It's because of the bulbs.
They lost their last month. I'll see where they get their efficiency.
Well, they're all bought paid for.
Neither of them, that, that's the easiest part of the thing.
Our electric bill there is usually about a hundred bucks a month.
For?
All the lights.
It usually, I think it's between ten, twelve dollars a light.
But it's hard to spell, goes, that doesn't look very promising at all. Um, the expense for those, like the water district is very expensive, this is, oh, I, okay, step back. The person who was going to do it for us has decided not, that she didn't have time to do it. So then I had to find another lawyer that would possibly do it, and I came up with it allers. I talked to Cunia, talked to them earlier. And their guess, I mean, the cost to set up this water district is 12 to 17,000 dollars, just the legal part of it all. And on top of that, then, there's stricter regulations than what the first person said as far as, you know, setting up the board and the meeting and stuff like that. Um, as far as the Hendricks family in town, their health is deteriorating. You have the Stringer family in town. You have, and there's one other family in town, the Stevens family, but they're younger and they don't care anything about anything. So, you, I don't know if you would want a board with just the Stringers and the elevator manager, and I don't know if the elevator manager could do that, and I don't know if one of you guys could be on the board, or, I don't know how it can go, generally it has to be residents within the, so you don't have, you have enough people for the board. Let's face it, there's not enough people for a board.
So.
So you're gonna get the well?
The well is currently, if they use the well the way it is, that serves the entire town, that's the reason you have to have a water district concept, right?
If we, if they, okay, it started that if we want to use the funds that the city of Pioneer has, you got to agree that they can, with the funds, overstart a well district, and then they can take care of the well. So if something happened to the well, then the county would not be responsible for it.
But then at one other time, we talked about, what if they each drilled the well?
Uh, you can't use, they'd have to all personally drill the well.
They'd have to personally do that?
You cannot use public funds to drill a private well.
They can't create a grant or anything like that?
For private purposes, yeah. We talked about that, yeah, and when I got out of here, it's like, we can't do that. They can't use public funds to drill a well, a private property. I haven't got to the elevator to see if they want to drill their own well. I think that, I don't know if you could see anywhere around it, but I'm seeing, you can well.
Well, I remember when Arnold and Mildred Torkelson were having issues with their well out the east of town there, just at the end of the T, and he said that the rock out there was pretty deep, and they were gonna have to go, and he wondered if they were gonna, you know, by the time they'd have to pay for that. So I guess I'm just, I don't know how we're gonna do that, but I think they better use some of the money and try to find a lawyer to figure it out, because that, if each one of them would have to drill a well, I mean, you got, what, four houses, four town, or four different residents?
The elevator, and you have three residents.
Well, is the elevator, is the, is the well by the park, is that where it's at?
The elevator's by the park, mhm, south side of the park. You know, I've been forward on this many times, I've got that all mapped out on whatever, I've got that done, I've got various things done, but my problem, you're gonna come down to that board.
That you can't, that you can't.
But I don't think you can establish and do it. I mean, you can't have the string and three strong, is it gonna be your board? Then where's your checks and balance, or?
Well, first off, we better thank you for all the work.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, what else?
Because it's something that you walked by and we said, hey, you, will you help, and you have.
Well, yeah.
So we appreciate that.
I mean, I would love it if the well, if they could have their own district, they were thinking they can keep their own, you know, you lose your identity when you lose a town, or when you lose a school, when you lose anything, part of you goes with it, and, you know, they're, they're holding on, and they hold, they evidently have conned before for discontinuances, and it didn't happen, because they didn't want to lose it, but now, I don't know how we can sustain. I don't know, the only question I could go to is ask, um, who has to serve on that board, if they have to be residents of the city. If they don't have to be residents of the city, and you could pull outside sources in, then it might be doable.
Well, that might be an avenue to look, you know, look into.
That would be the only thing I could think of, and I would say it would have to be Houston.
Mm, that's in my district, yeah.
You'd have to have one of the Stringers, you want the whole family. And I don't know if we can have the elevator manager, was the other one, he agreed to be on the board.
Okay.
But if we can get that board, do you think we should spend the 12 to 17,000? I mean, basically, it's your money.
Right. Well, how much is in, didn't you say it was like a hundred thousand or something like that?
Yeah, a hundred thousand.
Well, that's a good question, I have a question, what kind of shape is this well in as we speak?
This is their second well, it's not their first well. It's their second well, it, really? I question that, we put a new line into the, a new line, we buried to the elevator, because their line was rusty and bad, so their line is good. Um, we have John Hendricks, he puts the chlorine, takes care of the well, and we pay him a hundred dollars a month to do that, and to take care of the well. Well, that's gonna be a continuing bill. You know, chlorine would be, um, our testing is quarterly. It's fifty bucks a month for the quarter, you know, and they test it, and they've always passed their tests.
I know they started, well, I haven't been over there for quite a while, but they started using bottled water at the elevator, because it was messing, the line was messing with their coffee maker and.
That's, we put a new line in.
But I still think they used the.
They used all bottled water?
I think.
So the only thing that water's being used by, so flush your tanks?
Probably.
Would the elevator be a discussion if they want to just dig their own well? Then you've got the three houses.
And they're probably the biggest consumer, just flushing the, and, you know, with the fertilizer and whatnot, when they mix some fertilizer with the water, I'm guessing they probably use more water.
I don't know how that works, I don't think a lot of it comes out of that area, or does it? Do you think they're using that one inch line going down there to?
I'm guessing they probably use that for adding.
Yeah, I don't know.
Sprayer water.
That's a good point, because I just wonder, you know, what the consumption, if they do use quite a bit of water, is there any possibility that, I know this has come up in this discussion previously, is the elevator just taking over the well? Have they ever?
How much would you use dial on, like, if you put a, or John, either one, if you went out and sprayed 10,000 gallons with, uh, putting, if you're using sprayer? We're trying to figure out how much water, like Pioneer would use from the elevator. On a day when they're spraying out there, would they use four or five trucks?
You could figure a minimum of 10 gallon a acre. Most of the time, maybe more than 20 gallons. Yeah.
Yeah, you'd probably, easily.
Well, if it's a, yeah, it's a quantity, if they're really spraying.
They're your biggest consumer, because I can't imagine a house unless you got a whole bunch of kids.
And big sprayers, they can get a house, they can make it real easy.
Yeah.
Oh, I know, the elevator in Livermore will use 23 to 30,000 gallons, that, in that one period.
Right, yeah. I just, my question is, if the elevator had any thoughts of just assuming control of that well, if there's any way of them just taking it over, means they are the largest water user.
Why would they want to?
No, they wouldn't.
That's what I was gonna say, that was, that, it wouldn't be to their advantage really to do that.
Well, if not, they're gonna have the truck in there.
Yeah.
I mean, if the well goes down, they're gonna need water somewhere.
That well goes down, it'll be your responsibility to.
Then it'll be the county.
Because you will get it, along with the property tax, and the elevator's property tax will be more than, I mean.
This is my, I'm gonna buy a bridge somewhere.
That sort of seems like you're trying to value your bridge, actually.
Well, so.
Why would that well be different than, say, the well on my, correct, acreage?
As is a public well.
Because you're establishing a public.
More than one household, or whatever use of it.
So your research in this letter was that it costs somewhere between 12 and 17,000 dollars to establish a water district? That is a possibility if?
We can meet the requirements of a board.
Of a board, so if you could do that, and establish a district that would, essentially it's for the well, it's a water district, would the district, if it's, if established, be able to end up with all of the money from Pioneer?
That's up to you guys. There's some money in the water fund, but I don't think it's that much, I'd have to go check, maybe 10,000.
Well, first, we'd have to find out first if you can create a board outside of the city.
Even have a, yeah, if you can.
So, um, I would say spend the legal money to find that out, and then, if it's doable, then go on with maybe the board, we'd have to decide whether we wanted to do the full board, or the full, whatever they call that. But, um, the water district.
Right. And then the question being, appears that Pioneer is going to unincorporate as a town, and the money is going to pass to the district indoor, what, the county?
Well, then the city board takes all the money, and they hold all our funds, and they take care of that for six months, I believe they have it. And at the end of the six month period, they pay the bills, make sure everything's in order, and then all of it moves to you.
So you could.
And then you would start, I don't know how the property taxes, you'd probably, you'd like, you, we did with the tip for Livermore, you move the parcels over from one district to another district, so they become rural parcels. Now, people are not gonna file a budget this year, so I don't.
Okay.
Well.
I don't think I have to do a budget, since I'm not gonna have it next year, so.
It always says, if you don't file a budget, you're stuck to whatever your budget was from last year. Um, at least that is with township, so I assume it is with cities, but I'd have to check.
If we don't do a budget, they withhold funds.
That's true.
They withhold all your, you'll get the road use funds too, which is not too much. Um, we get all the road use funds, I don't know if they hold property taxes or not, any state funds they hold, like the due year loss. I could check. Yeah. I mean, that's if you don't do a budget, you don't get that money, so.
Yeah.
And Ted all knows about this, and I've talked to Matt Ross, and he knows all about, I've talked to everybody that needs to know about this, so it's all. They all know, our, our planning is to end just at the end of the fiscal year, end of June, June 30th of this year. It'll be done. Well, if we have anybody show up for election, they don't show up for election.
Work as long as they want.
They can't show up for that, I mean.
And we did get that scheduled for, last week, for February 4th, so.
Well, appreciate all the work that you've done on this, and first Andy's comment, I mean, this is just what we know to date. It appears that if a district could be formed for this well, for this water district, that might be the route to go. And I mean, I'm thinking some of the money would be, the district would have some money in an account.
You would have to forward that money back to them.
Right.
Because the city, there's what you call, the, the states don't take everything. And then you would have to, after it comes here, then you would have to forward that money back over to them.
Can we do that, if it goes to the county, can we?
I'm gonna ask the attorney to.
That this goes to the government, that's a public.
I don't know, that, I've never been.
And I'm not saying all of it, but I, what I'd like to see is that there's enough money in the, if it's a water district, there's enough money there that would cover a new well. That you'd have money there, so that if something bad would happen, a new well would be able to be maintained, if you have a.
Should John Beatty be looking into this a little bit too, the county?
Sure, good, yeah.
I mean, for our side of it.
For our side, and just try to decide what, what is the best for the county on that part of it. You could get with the lawyers that you're now working with to see what the options are, can we?
If we can't, we're the board, then.
Right, then, then, then there's nothing we can do, so that's, number one, we need to know that.
I think that's the first question, yeah.
And then we need to, then we need to get John involved. Um, don't you think Peggy can try to get all that? See where we go with the county and that.
Didn't they run a water line out of, where was it? Up in that area a few years ago, didn't they want to, everybody, all the cities to hook onto their big corporate water line? Whatever you call it.
Actually, I talked to somebody on that water line, where is the closest water line that could possibly serve the city? Which we looked into that too, and there's nothing.
Nothing.
I think they found one like 24. And they're not gonna drive it that far for three houses?
No. Mm-mm.
I'm just looking at it from the county standpoint, if this all ends up coming back to the county, then we're responsible for that well. And I guess, if it maintains itself for a number of years, but at some point in time, it will have to be replaced.
Oh, it will be, but then you're gonna get everything that, you know, you're gonna get all their property taxes, all their lots, all their.
Right.
I mean, you will have that.
We'll be getting some more revenue into the county.
Increase valuation, if you go for the county.
I mean, because the elevator's got a pretty, I mean, the houses don't, I'll give you that, and the empty lots don't, but the elevator has a lot of value there.
Right.
And we're on the ball.
Yeah. So, I mean, worst case scenario.
Money to run that well.
Check with John, and if the county ends up with a well, well, so be it, we get revenue over the years, and it, well's in good shape today, hopefully.
As far as I know, you know, and I, I can see somebody will live where the Hendricks living, that they're gone. The other two houses.
Well, my question is, is what happens when the three houses that are apparently there are no longer, and then you're providing all the service for a business?
Exactly.
Sooner or later, you're gonna have to say, the co-op's gonna have to buy the well, or take care of the well, or, if they're the only ones out there.
That might be the legality question.
So that's the come up, if they would just dig their own well if needed. But then, and they're not gonna find each other, I mean, that manager, this time, would I throw that manager and that manager, and. Hey, go ahead.
Right. Well, appears you've got a list of more questions.
Well, obviously, if, on the board, that's the number one thing, if the board can be established and done outside people who don't live in that district, then.
Right, a moot point.
It's a moot point.
Then you, that stuff's not gonna be in, and we're gonna have to move forward with, the county's gonna end up with the well, and then we need to find out at some point.
Well, you might be able to see if there'd be some of those surrounding farmers that are close. I mean, I don't know if you could talk Arnold and Mildred on being on that board, they're within a half a mile of the city of Pioneer. Who's down the street, or down the road.
They would have no connection.
They're not serving. No, I know, but they, they're, they're not serving more than what we are.
Well, you're serving as a county, and it's your best interest, and the elevator would be their best interest, and somebody that lives there is connected, their best interest. You know, you have a financial responsibility. Torkelsons, they're gonna lose their gurvy serves, to the city.
Maybe needs to go up and talk to John and get some legal advice on how to proceed.
I don't think I'd even get John involved until we know if that board can be.
We do, yeah, wait until we have all the.
I talked to John last time he was here, he threw his hands up, and he said, but you know more about this than I do, so what?
Yeah, you do. You've done a lot of research.
But, that's true.
But that's what he should be doing though, too.
That's a thought.
When, when do you think that they would give us an answer on the board?
Oh, I'll just, I'll text her, I mean, I'll just email her today and ask her that question, and then she'll get back to me, and I can let Hank know.
I was gonna say, they would already know, and we'll either have to put it back in the.
No, just let Hank know, and then, you know, if the board has to be set, and I'm sure she might have to do a little research too.
Right.
That's fair.
I think that's.
And we'll know, that's first step.
Yeah, I would say the board, and if they can't do the board, then you guys would know. But then they get their money, and, I'm afraid, they're gonna get, I'll say a hundred thousand dollars, I'll put two wells in. If you save that, you can put it in a special fund, or you can do whatever you want to.
You can designate money, yeah.
Now, when you get that money, you can designate it to the Pioneer well.
And a quick thing, and we'll do it, but, the 12 to 17,000 dollars to establish a water district, you'd save that money as well? If you don't establish it, that's, that's a pretty good chunk to establish anything, but that's money that wouldn't have to be spent, that could go into this fund potentially, or?
Mm-hmm, because it, we.
Does that much more money?
We talked about sharing legal costs on this, but I guess the money's all yours. You know, you're Robin Peter, if they called, if they Peter, I mean, it doesn't really matter, Pioneer pays it all, but then, hasn't been the budget. We all hate that stuff, but, you know, it's part of life, okay?
Anything, anything else from Pioneer, or Livermore, or anything that you're dealing with?
No.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Janet. We're gonna get our, what you call it, done, our, well settlers' park thing sometime. You guys, that's in the budget, isn't it?
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
I was gonna pay it after the first of the year, so now that we're past that. Um, would you send me an email and tell me how to make that out? Who do I mail it to, what should it be?
Yeah, I know.
Does it pay to the city, does it pay to old town?
No, it's those settlers, they own that land, and they actually, yeah, all theirs.
Okay, so just send me an email and.
Was it 500?
Put it together, or how much was it?
I think it was 500. I talked to Lloyd, and Lloyd will get things done too. But that's okay, okay. Good conversation, yeah.
Thank you, Janet, you too now.
Alright, moving on, we're right up against, uh, looks like we'll be going into drainage for the completion hearing of Branch C of District 35.
Hey, I'll make a motion to close out of regular session and go into drainage?
Okay.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All in drainage.
At what point, if something goes bad with that well, I mean, are you testing, are you? I mean, here, you'd assume that the water tested every, however.
Well, she said, didn't she say there was a quarterly, and that was, they do it quarterly, he takes care of it monthly.
But the, like anything, the more you use the well, the better the water is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, with three houses using probably, hardly any at all. The elevator's the only one that's really, water, water, during this time of year, they aren't on the street.
Alright. So, this is the completion hearing for District 35, Branch C. The realities of opening a hearing and all that business?
Yeah, it's, you've got it on the agenda, you've got that covered, so.
Okay, so that's all we've got, is the completion hearing to deal with.
Did the final pay estimate here a meeting or two ago, um, that would pay the retainage, and you don't do that until thirty days after this hearing. The amount for that is seventy-five thousand, six twenty-two, point six one, and that represents a hundred percent of the retainage. I don't have anything in particular. Trish says she hasn't gotten anything in writing as far as objections?
Uh-uh, no objection.
Well, we have several in the audience that are.
Yes, pretty good attendance for landlords that I know of, and.
Nobody has anything to throw, so I'm.
It's certainly mild looking group.
I'd like to hear what, if any of you guys, what your thoughts are, other than, what year did it start, what, I, I had to ask Trish the other day, I wasn't trying to be smart, it just seemed like this thing to going on for too short of eternity.
Well, Trish's vote is left to him, so, um, the only thing I will, I assume there's some type of record of this, or of the EPS coordinates, the lines and the crews, does that get recorded anywhere, or? We give ASVIL plans with coordinates to Trish, to the county, and make it available for any landowners.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that would be the locations where connections were made, the location where the pipe ended up, uh, any sizing changes, any of that.
When is that available, Rick?
Just, should be very soon. I think we got everything we needed from the contractor, I'm sure we did, so. We haven't given anything yet, have we, Trish? ASVILs?
No, it's.
Next month, and then next month.
Well, I, I would like a copy of that.
Absolutely, understandable, and our own probably too. You bet, no, we'll make sure of that. We, anymore now with the ASVILs, we add a sheet to it that shows where all the tile connections were, what coordinates they were at, so the landowner has that available to them also.
So that's all, do you guys want to have any, anything else?
Everything is done, and to your satisfaction out there?
Well, I think it met specs, I think I'd need to do some more leveling and stuff, but I was probably going to have to do that anyway, so it don't matter. And spring would be the good time to do that, get, get some of that settlement out of the way that's going to occur, so.
Well, I'd like to thank the board for your efforts on my, on my behalf. I'm sure Bruce would probably hear it too, and I know I did, I had read at times, wish we'd have never started it, but Dial kept reminding me, we've got to keep our eye on what the goal was, to get it done, when it was done, and he's right, he wanted a good tile line that would hopefully be there for the next generation and beyond, and I think the main line is, should be that.
I'm anxious to see it work in the spring, that's.
Well, I don't think it's ever not, not worked, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
It's been, I've been kind of, probably pressing my luck going up there, because I drive back in there just to see how much water can, and there's still water coming out of it, so it's like, it's, it's pulling water out of that area, um, I guess I'm just, and I, we don't have a magic ball, or Trish ran out of a magic potion to put over, or something, because we, we wouldn't have started it if we'd have known the mess that we were going to go through to, to get to where we are now.
Yeah.
It was just forever, and I'm sure they probably wouldn't have bid it if they would have.
Yeah, true.
But, um, I guess the, I, I think we have to improve as, whether it's the board, or however of, in my opinion, keeping better track of days that are workable versus crappy days, versus wet days, versus whatever, because when it comes to this, and we've got a two-year timeframe, and I know that Dial, you guys requested they didn't come in when your seed corn was planted, because they didn't want holes for the kids to walk through, or whatever, so there were certain things that happened, but by the same token, there were certain timeframes that we said, okay, yeah, you can go fix that sanitary steward um, for that fourteen days, or whatever it was, I can't even remember how long they were gone, it was probably the best timeframe in that period where they gone, and we didn't have them back, and however many feet they were doing a day, take that times to fourteen, I think the other question is, is when somebody bids a job, we ought to be able to ask them, are you going to stay here? If you're from Southern Iowa, are you going to drive back and forth every day? Because the people up on the other side of the section that were doing that job, they were here in the morning, their machines were running it before sunup, they were digging, they were, the, the time was a lot different, and I don't want to be on a soapbox, but I just think that we should ask those questions.
Yeah, we need to hold them accountable.
And then we should say, uh, okay, there was five days last week, and actually, there was six, because Saturday's still workable, if you're doing it, do you work Saturdays? Because we do, we want you to, them guys want you to, um, those are questions I think we should ask.
Well, now, that can all be built into the specs, as long as you come up with how you want to summarize it, because it's, you have the completion date, and that's what you mostly have, days they work you can control, you, I mean, you could write that right into the specs, you want them working Saturdays. I would speculate that they probably cut back the hours of the rest of the week, so they're not paying a, a lot of overtime, so you, you really want to work through that and be sure you had your bases covered, and didn't go too far with it to up the price.
Well, I think we had extreme amount of help from the guys that were sitting behind it, but I don't know how many times, I'd text Dial, are they there? And I'd get a full report of, yep, they're there, they, they're at this hub, they're here, they're, they've, they've done this overnight, so we have to congratulate them, because in my opinion, they were our eyes on, and I think when we do this, again, we need to talk to the landowner and say, here, here, this is our deal, when they start, you start writing, because I don't have time to run out there every night and check from this point to this point, but somebody does, somebody has to.
Yeah.
That's my biggest complaint, and I'm not blaming you, and I'm not blaming, the weather was just a huge factor.
Yeah.
But I, I, I guess I'm, I'm kind of disappointed that it took so long, but by the same token, there were certain things that we didn't really have a whole lot of control of, and like Mr. Peterson said when he was here, when we talked about it a couple weeks ago, um, we can fight this, and then we're just going to fight, prolong it, cost more interest, cost whatever, but if you guys are good with it, we kind of all are mad about it, but it's done, so is that billable with you guys? You're the ones that are paying the bill, we're just the ones that.
Well, my opinion is that the job got done, I think they did a good job of laying the pipe, and that's, that's the most important part of it, and it got drought out, and there's a lot of, they should have been here more than they were, but in the end, it doesn't matter, you know, like, this is a hundred and fifty year project, and, and as long as it's done right, and, and quite honestly, I'm kind of glad they didn't go in the spring, because I think we would have had bigger messes. The job ended up good, and that's what we want.
And the, what, you was near comment was the best crew, they ended up with the best crew?
I think they did, yeah.
Was the ones that finished it.
That's our feelings, too.
And I guess, Eric, when Eric and I visited about this, we talked about, and I'm not saying anything about Kings, I'm not saying anything, but, but we've dealt with other construction people, and we know that people that have worked in this area, I think we should do a better job of doing a little bit bigger, deeper into the past, and I'm not saying they did chotty work or anything like that, I'm thinking that, just call them and say, what's the guidelines? Are you going to work Monday through what? If the weekend's good, do you work the weekends? Because when they did that up on the Bradgate Blacktop, they were, they were looking for sunshine, whenever it was decent, they were digging. That's my opinion, so I'll shut up.
So I learn from everything that you go through, and I think Bruce makes a lot of valid points, they all, we're dealing with this, we learn from it. Technically, yeah, brought up that we, they didn't get it done when they were supposed to, but we already had that discussion, rather than beat a dead horse, that it, we got it done. I guess my question, means this is a completion hearing, we've got over seventy-five thousand dollars in retainage that would be paid a month after the hearing.
Right.
We do have, they, they just basically completed this project, we have a year guarantee?
Yes, you'll get through next spring, summer, and fall with a guarantee, it'll be hard to repair anything.
Okay, so, with that guarantee, they are required to, A, either come back and fix, replace, whatever, or they hire someone?
Yes, we, we give them notice.
That something's wrong, something's not working right, then they are either required to come and do it, or we hire someone to fix it and.
Yes.
They take the bill?
Yes.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that was.
Absolutely, yes, good point.
So if there is something that shows up this, this year in 2020, between spring and fall, it is on them?
Yes, and we'll want to get word as early as we can if something shows up, um, so we can put them on notice.
Well, that's, the other thing is, those, you guys are the eyes that are out there, because, you know, we don't see it.
You're the ones that go through the construction area, the farming, that's through their fields, what about?
We'll be happy to notify.
What about Dial's, uh, comment about some additional leveling? Which I, I'm not, you're here, I, you're planning on it, you're going to have to go smooth things out a little bit this way.
Yeah, we allowed him, we asked him to mount it a little bit.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and we say, no more than twelve inches, and, and the goal is that most of that will disappear through that first, uh, season of pre saws, and then nearly always it needs to be something done after that, I mean, that's.
Well, that, I guess my question, if that is the case, uh, we're at the completion, to me means completion, then the landowner hasn't, you know, no recourse to say, well, I spent X number of hours, hired equipment to do something we should have done, that's too bad? Is there any concern with that? I just want to look a little forward as we wrap this up, I mean.
If there's anything excessive, I would say you go back on the contractor, if it's working at once, um, I, I believe that's, that falls back to the landowner.
Well, we don't have every last person, but we've got the vast majority of the construction projects sitting there, I remember I was out with John Norman, he had, there again, you lose track of how long ago this has been, I think it's been a year ago in the spring, and the concerns in, in the field that he farms, and having to do some extra critical work to get it even farm over that spring, that's what I'm concerned about. Do you folks farming this know of anything that you see, that's what Dial and all is on leveling, that's going to be a major issue this spring?
I don't think we're going to.
That's, I guess, your point.
Yeah.
Set up their own harness a little bit.
Yeah, we'll just, you know, that's just, no, dressing up, and that's fine, that goes with the project.
Okay.
It's kind of go through a settling period.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But, I mean, you had a quite mess in that part in particular.
Concerned how wet it was, women were trying to level it just a little bit further there, I thought they did a pretty good job.
Because if I don't miss my guess, once you say you've signed off on it, you don't have a recourse to go back and tell them that, hey, we need damages, or something for the leveling, I'm not, we know that if, 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 uh, any of the farmers go out there and it's a gaping hole because they missed a connection, or did it chotily, yes, we know that they can come back and fix that, because that's part of the, the DS, if there's, I just don't want to miss something as we wrap this up.
Well, and that's what bond is for, if it's something that's a contractor's responsibility, or he caused the problem, that's what the bond is for, if we can't get the contractor to do it, you can put him on notice that you're going to take care of it, it's their bill, and you're going to the bond company with it. They hate it when you go to the bond company, because it affects their rates in the future. You usually will get them back to take care of things, or they hire some bigger locals.
We just need a motion, except that seventy-five, the number was seventy-five, six twenty-two, six one, is that what I heard?
That's what I wrote down.
Yeah.
I do have a question, do you have the figures from the estimated cost to the final cost, how we came out on the project in its entirety?
Or the grand total?
Yeah.
I think, if, I looked at it lately, I think we're on nine hundred and some thousand, we were three thousand over what we'd estimated for total cost, I mean, it was really, really, really close. Okay, actually, I think this is the totals, seven thousand and something, oh, under, nine hundred and, am I looking at that right?
It was slightly under, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I was, but I wanted to find out these numbers before.
Engineering, legal, everything that.
Everything.
Yeah.
So what was the total?
And then the.
I don't know, sixteen, nine hundred and sixteen some dollars.
Nine sixty-two, nine sixty-nine.
Nine sixty-two, nine sixty-nine.
And thirty-nine cents.
Thirty-nine cents.
As of this day.
That would be pretty darn close, would it not?
Yeah.
And it looks like it, and estimate was?
Nine seventy.
So, you feel comfortable that it was actually that much less?
Mm-hmm.
I'm talking.
Pardon?
On the engineer's, uh, cost, um, when we had, when we had a meeting, and we vented this year about possibly paying for the first half to try and cut back on the margin interest, um, Rick made the comment that he'd been looking through the engineering costs at that time, and said he was surprised that we were a little bit under what we had estimated for that length of time, and so according to that sheet, it was supposed to be a total of around fifty thousand for engineering, and so that would bring it down to around that twenty-five to thirty area halfway through, because that's roughly what the project was at that time, and I see the final cost on there for engineering is about a hundred and forty thousand, um, reclass, full-time inspection, which is still less than fifteen percent of the project cost. I was concerned it was going to go a bigger percentage than that, but still, less than fifteen percent of the overall project cost, more than I would have liked, of course, uh, but I talked to some other firms, uh, with inspection, they, nobody will come close to that percentage.
Yeah, you're right, uh, I was hoping it was less, but with full-time inspection and reclass, everything added in, it was a hundred and forty thousand something.
So you did have that stuff figured in on your first, when you gave.
Not, I didn't have full-time inspection.
Half of that in at that time.
I didn't have full-time inspection figured, that's a big difference. I would say that, just typically with, with double, uh, engineering costs, because you have somebody there all the time. I was delighted it was less than fifteen percent yet, not delighted with the number.
I, yeah, I mean, yeah, there's going to be cost, uh, let me just mention that charge for full-time inspection, we did receive that, these folks did receive that on this project?
Yes.
Are you happy with that inspection on this project?
There was a time there when they were, uh, just north of 190th there, when he was, Jordan was up on the other projects, the Bradgate project, and actually, there was some connections there that they ended up having to get back up, because they, they didn't meet, meet inspection, other than that, I think everything went pretty good. Other than that, I think everything went pretty good.
I mean, Bruce mentioned, and he thanks you folks, and Dial in particular, and Harland and everybody involved that's out there, that, I mean, that's great, you do want the landowners to be aware of the project, know the project, keep an eye on the project, but you're not getting paid anything for doing that, you're just a concerned landowner and or tenant. So, I would make a point to make sure that inspection is the inspection, especially when you, these folks are paying for it.
Yep.
Well, I don't know what full-time inspection cost between, but if that's the case, then I think the next time we do something, we should seriously consider hiring someone that has some type of construction knowledge to, that would be able to be, I mean, you guys farm, it's usually done during farming season, so most of you have other jobs that you want to go do. But by the same token, we've been through projects where you have shoddy work, and I didn't, I'm not accusing them, but by the same token, we don't want to have to go test out a bond to see if
Right.
it gets fixed or means, but when you're talking a million dollars, that's a lot of money.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah.
For a hundred and some year project, so I guess, all in all, I just think we have some things that we as a board need to make sure that it's better overview, better, uh, review of calendars, the timeframe they're gonna work and all of that stuff. And make sure that inspections are done, whether we have to go out and do it, or whatever, but somehow it has to be done, because that's too much money to just say, oh, they buried it, and all the pipes in, in the ground, it's, I think it's all right, all this water coming out at the end. So, with that, I'd make the motion to accept the seventy-five, six, twenty-two, sixty-one, I guess, is what I heard.
I'll second that.
That is the motion to pay the retainage after the thirty days of, after the completion hearing.
I wish I could give it, put a tip on there for all of the work for the, the crew that was our eyes out there.
I was just gonna say.
I don't think so, but I don't chuck that much.
Now, first and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pause, motion carries.
And I would also remember that Rick was, when he was here, he said, as long as there was no, um, objections that you received, that I would, rather than take it and try to fight it, that he was probably good with going along with this too, so that's my closing comment.
We certainly wouldn't worry about, uh, someone else inspecting. The only thing we'd wanna do is we surely get certain things recorded every day. It'd probably save some money, most likely it would, uh, because you're not paying for benefits and everything else, so.
Well, we got, just down the street from there, where the tile that, uh, what was it? They fixed on the corner of, uh-
Rick's Bastion?
Yeah, Bastion.
Mm-hmm.
Where, I don't know how many times they've been in there, because the butts aren't, you know, in, and if it's turned enough that it starts sucking dirt in that, in that grassy area there, and once or twice in the last couple of years, we've had to have it fixed, well, those are the problems that you have, and that's only come six, seven foot deep. That up there where they just put in is what, fourteen to twenty in spots?
A little over fifteen.
Fifteen? So, we really don't, you know, it's gonna suck a lot of dirt before it comes to the top, but, uh, by that time, we've probably got our year used up.
And that's where the tonneau joints and wrapping each joint, they dealt that a lot.
I agree, I'm just being a pain in the ass today.
It's your day, huh? Your turn?
Well, I, I wouldn't want to have to pay the bill that some of these guys are, but by the same token, that, you know, they came to us, we run out, so.
You, just a question, you've got a board or something that figures out like easements and stuff, telling you whatever, what their cost is for that, what do you call that board? Is there somebody that figures-
Appraiser, appraiser report is what we do for, for right away on the tile job.
But I was thinking there's somebody in the county that's, you got some type of board that does, uh, figures cost of loss of production and stuff like that on these things.
Oh, that would be the appraisers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pat Hill and Brent Keen.
Those are the ones that's been involved recently.
So, is there a possibility of them being involved, hiring them to do something like inspections or something? Just throwing fun, I don't know.
I suppose it's a possibility moving forward, if there, you're, you're asking for quite a bit, putting a lot of responsibility on these folks, that, you know, they sit down-
Do they have the knowledge to be able to do a lot of that?
Yep.
I don't, I think we should just have a work session sometime and visit and see what options we have, I don't know.
I think it's just, bring up a lot of good points, it's a mental learning experience, and, you know, you don't want to make every mistake and learn from your mistakes, but from things that you know, or the mistakes of others, try not to make those in the future. And if there's something that we learned from this, I think that's what Bruce is getting at. We, we're gonna look a little harder at future projects, but like you guys all know too, uh, you know, it is a hundred and fifty year project for all the, for all, and if we want it for the, you know, for the future generations, so that part of it, we did cut this construction company a lot of slack, but part of that being is the dollars, this can get levied, we see no issue, we have a March levy coming up, that's worth a lot of money. And typically, when you go to litigation, nobody wins, because by the time you get all said and done, you've spent what you've saved, uh, and that's kind of the consensus, so. But, yeah, this is all kind of the learning process, it really has, uh, but, I don't know. And hopefully, if we sit here a year from now, and we go through it this year in twenty twenty, and everything works well and there's no issues, then we just consider that that's the hundred and fifty year project that's gonna be out there and working well into the great grandchildren's existence. Anything else?
Anything else for it?
What do you need a motion for?
To accept the project as complete.
Okay.
I mean, unless that's what you-
Well, maybe-
I just made a motion to accept the seventy-two.
Seventy-five.
For the retainage. Okay.
I would make a motion to accept it as a completion, the completion of the project, if that's what you need.
That's what I wondered. Dave, second, any discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Pause, there we go.
See, if you tell us what you really need.
What you doing in the seat, you gotta let him go.
Slide on over here, Bruce.
Anything else?
Come over here shortly.
You know, going by on the cemetery road, it looks like there's some time this past summer, fall, whatever, it looks like somebody been in, working on that end of the ditch a little bit. Can we get an update, is there gonna be an assessment or remarks on anything that's been done? And what, what is the status of that, I guess?
Well, didn't-
Okay, brush and-
Rick tried to get the easements and stuff put together so that we can do that, and I don't think it is completed yet.
Full terms?
I think they're still trying to get all the landowners in that area, get the things put together so that they have the ability to go in there, um.
Part of the problem was that they didn't want to spend a lot on survey work, so they wanted to get some kind of type of general easement description through there, and that's what the attorney, I think, was trying to get worked out.
And I think the other thing is, is rather than just say we're gonna go in there, we had Doug Marshall with that mulcher deal that he puts on his bombcat. He went in there and did a, like, was it eight hours?
Yes.
Like, eight hours worth of work, just to see what he could do, so that we could kind of multiply however many feet he did. Take that time's what we gotta go down, but there's some pretty good sized trees in there that we might end up, and they talked about being able to pull that stuff out, whether they could haul it away, whether they could burn it, well, the city won't let them burn it, so it has to be figured out what we're gonna do with it, so. Um, the other thing was is, uh, for the, whether they bid it, or whether they, because we don't know whether you'd have a good day and you'd get your meat, whatever your footage was, or he, he thought he could do an X amount of feet per day, we thought, we'd rather have a closer number of what you're gonna spend on it, and bid it, that, that was our thought, so.
Well, to Harland's question, to the March levy for District Thirty-five, see, is there much extracurricular on that?
Other bills?
Other bills, yeah.
Not sure, that wouldn't be part of Brant C, that would be part of Thirty-five itself.
Thirty-five, in total.
Yeah.
Much bigger area.
Much, much bigger area, but it could, I would expect there'd be a minimal amount at this point for, this for Thirty-five for that area, but I think that's kind of the synopsis right now.
We've been told, and Gary May was, is just mad as all get out, that we're even considering doing something in there, because from the cemetery road to the highway, it's, I think it, was it twelve foot?
I think it's seventeen.
Seventeen, I mean, it's huge number, he says you couldn't stop the water in there if you wanted to. Well, probably not, but-
The teeth, the brush, the debris.
You have all the trees that fall and whatever, and it backs up, so, I mean, sooner or later, don't you want to take care of some of the mess in there?
Okay, it's, yeah, it's like Bruce said, it's for the benefit of the outlet of District Thirty-five. You don't want trees in the lower part, some of this brush can be removed, um, but in the grand scheme, if that encompasses, and that's a fairly good sized district, we don't want to ever diminish the fact that it doesn't, it's not gonna be free, but split across District Thirty-five, it's, should be fairly reasonable for whatever that cost is. But it's for the benefit of the outlet, even with that fall, you don't want a tree laying in your, in your drainage ditch.
Well, it's covered under the highway.
Yeah, blocking.
Yeah, a lot of that happens.
Right, well, and I walked it one day last fall, you know, and it's, it's a mess in there. I mean, it, the reason, the other reason was Humboldt Homes was talking about changing that bridge in there, because they have a bridge in the middle of that that goes across, and one sucks into the other. Well, they got tired of waiting on it, because you just can't go in there and start cutting, clear cutting everything. So, they basically decided they're gonna do their own drainage and leave it, the way it was, so. So, that's what we know.
Right.
But if you want an entertaining walk, you get out down there by the highway and walk up through there, there's a lot of places that all you see is the hide from the deer that went scooting through there, and I was turning to the, no, I was the wrong, we should have said Eric, he's a lot smaller.
No, thank you, I don't need him, I hide out there either, but, yeah, it's rough, it is, but, it's just for the benefit of the outlet of that district. And Trish came up with a very small amount of a little over eighteen hundred dollars outstanding for the
For what he did, Karen.
experiment, but Bruce brings up a good point. Benefit of getting that cleaned out, I believe it's gonna be a bid number. We're not gonna just say, well, just go have at it, and then get some astronomical bill, like, holy cow, this is a lot more than we thought for mulching and clearing, we're gonna have a pretty hard and fast number of what it's gonna cost.
We're hoping to anyway.
And we're very close, you got two contractors interested in it too, so.
Kinda help.
So, that should be an improvement. Good questions.
Is that it for drainage there, ma'am?
Anything else?
Oh, I just have a question on Open Ditch Five. That's the one that, I think it was Larry Trotter had a work order for, before, and he wanted some clean out, but he does not want a petition for it. But it does need to be cleaned out, um, it's got a part that's silt in it, and as a maintenance thing, you guys as a board can request that if you wanted to.
It's been quite a few years ago now, but we did a project, it has, they didn't say how long ago, but we had benchmarks and everything along it, and I guess I'm just throwing that out because it wouldn't take a lot, there'd be some checking on silt depth, but, again, at this point, it's so far, it's just a work order.
What is, did he have a work order?
He had a work order, he wanted some repair on it, and it wasn't draining like he thought it should.
Of course it's not, because I personally looked at that, free force of it anyway, where you could get a good look at it this past fall, it's extremely silted there. I believe it, it just, you know, this was more the upper portion than the lower, so it starts here, it didn't get down to where it, you know, ended, that's a little tougher to get to, but, yeah, it, it does, and I actually visited with Larry, I don't want a petition for the clean out, okay? But you're saying-
But it needs to be done.
It's a, yeah, and the problem being is, where do you start and stop?
Yes.
I mean, on, and it's, it's not near the size of, like, Thirty-five or some of the other larger districts, it's a relatively small district, a relatively short stretch of ditch, still a couple, three miles probably total, but, yeah, where do you start and stop? When we looked at it on a repair, that was a, there's a tile that's kind of halfway underwater at the very upper end of it. Well, the reason it is, it's not draining very well down on the, the rest of it, and it's not really a spot clean out situation, unfortunately, so.
I guess I would recommend that you go ahead and do it, just because, and do it in its entirety.
Yeah, it, it doesn't make, if you look at it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to try to spot.
Can you do it for what we can spend on it, is it a spot?
No.
Well, then we hope we can do-
You guys can request it as maintenance. I mean, that's part of keeping up-
Right, it's a maintenance.
Why doesn't he want to do a petition?
Expence to neighbors, I'm guessing.
Oh, okay.
Then the funny thing of it is, they're, and it's always by the landowner, their family owns the majority of the land in that district. Now, I didn't look at that, a lot of it, but it's, you know, I think it's something that we take a look at this year. I do, I've looked at it, and it's, what I've said, it's, it's really what Trish is saying.
I mean, it's been brought to our attention that it definitely needs
And that is correct.
work, cleaning out.
We haven't made anybody mad up in there.
Let's get her started.
So, you're saying we, and there's that, I know you're not of age, just, or as ready to attorney, but even if something isn't petitioned for, I don't know, not for the maintenance, it's just the maintenance. Even though it may cost X amount and over the fifty thousand dollars, we have the jurisdiction to do it.
Right.
I'll just throw this out there, if, you can go, if, if you do it between fifty and a hundred thousand, you can still go ahead with quotes, probably you won't have quantities to bid. You can go ahead with quotes and just have a public hearing with the landlords. That raises your limit up to a hundred thousand if, if you have a hearing for it. Like I say, the problem is, you won't have quantities to know what it's gonna cost.
Right.
Well, didn't he come in here, wasn't he animating? I think he was, and-
Or unless that was for eighteen, he was here for eighteen.
Eighteen, he also isn't, yeah, more than eighteen as well, so.
But it's, I don't know, there's no, they can't file remonstrance on it.
Yeah, not an issue at all of repair.
The repair and maintenance.
Improvement.
Right.
The repair, but it would be a-
Not for a certain work project, but it's, I don't want it to be left, and then the next board come in and go, why didn't they do that, you know?
Well, drainage ditch maintenance is ongoing. There's been talk of setting up, almost a rotating plan of cleaning ditches, and taking a look at the districts in their entirety and saying, this one is cleaned, we might as well go to this one, this one, this one, correct me if I'm wrong, but they just are continual need of maintenance.
Winnebago County has started a new process where they're giving another person the auditor's office, and the drainage clerk is looking for a chance to get out and actually look at ditches to determine if they need any clean outs.
And always try to prioritize, yeah, yes, because this kind of falls into that category, so.
And I think that's logical, is that correct?
He's like, move to this seat, I'm the floor, I forgot, I was first in the meeting, and then Tony cuts drop.
So, I would suggest, and that's District Five, that, that we- That we take that under advisement, take a hard look at it in this calendar year. Anything else on drainage?
Thank you. Would any of you guys like some coffee?
McCleod is still working with, uh, the railroad on three and nine with Humboldt Webster.
That sounds like Claire.
Yeah.
I thought they had that all figured out.
That's what I said. No?
Yeah, that's what, that's what, yeah.
I thought that was resolved.
It's, no. Who's paying, no?
Well, you're never gonna get the railroad, and they're never gonna admit to the, wanting to pay that.
So, yeah, um...
We may have a trial case for you to look at in Winnipeg County, we're going to be letting in the next month on a one with a railroad crossing, and we're trying to work the reclass so that we hit them hard on a reclass.
Good luck.
I know.
Good work, and good luck.
Yeah.
They just bring a lot of people in suits.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
Keep surprised at that one.
I was at one of those.
They've got the money in there.
Yeah, oh, surprise, surprise.
No, well, well, I surprised, because I thought it was done, but we understand.
It's done, I think, from what I understand, it just does not decide it on who's gonna pay.
That's Tom's about right.
And, oh God, what's the guy's name, McCleod, I can't think of his name. He's working with it.
Okay.
Well, it's a good thing, is Webster the lead?
They started it.
Good for them.
Lee started it, she can finish it.
There you go.
There you go.
Say good luck with that. Anything else drainage related? Anything else from you guys?
Motion to the right drainage.
I'll second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pause, out of drainage.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, everybody for showing up. Thanks, John, thanks, Dial. Pause.
Rick, I would really like to put something together as to how, what, when something's bid, something is put together for, what are your plans, how did, how, what's your work time? I mean, you know, you have a completion date of here, okay, so how are we gonna get from this point of bidding it to this point of completion? Um, do you work five days a week, do you work six days a week, do you work seven? I don't know, I have a clue, but in, in my opinion, I seriously think that they kind of left that out to dry. There was a lot of weekends, you know, and Saturday, we could've been, you know, and you put the timeframe that we had of six days a week, three hundred, a couple hundred feet of pipe in there on a Saturday, numerous Saturdays, they'd been done a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Or further up the pipe.
The thing you run into, different contractors do it so differently. We have a small company, uh, in Wollingford, Iowa, B and B Construction Farm Drainage.
Mhm.
Those guys often work seven days a week, and I...
But their window is like this.
Yeah, yeah, they do a lot of farm filing too, so their, their window is very short as far as large projects they can do. But, and then the contractors that'll work five, nine-hour days, and that's it. They don't touch a Saturday. I think we put more emphasis on the facts and figures at pre-construction meetings. Hand them down, hand them down.
I think that's what Bruce is getting at.
Yeah.
And references, maybe, we take a little harder look?
Fortunately, most of the time, it's people we know, but there are those that we don't know well enough.
Bingo.
Yeah.
Bingo.
Well, and I, I'm not saying anything against them, because Dial said that the crew that they had the last part of the job was the best crew that they'd had. But by the same token, the first group was probably at the opposite end of the spectrum. And I, they, Mike and Sandy are down there too.
And generally was, but, yeah, yeah, there's...
It was a fracas.
Yeah.
I mean, they dinked around for a short month at the beginning of that, before they asked about, hey, we can't just follow the old pile life. It was a month. And it was wet, and it was tough, but you, wouldn't you know that in a little less time?
Oh, you should know.
You know, you remember that.
Yeah, absolutely.
That made sense, that was a common sense maneuver, it wasn't gonna work. So, I think, all I can say was a learning experience, that we've gotta learn from it.
Yep.
Well, I think we should put something, some type of plan or something that we have as a guideline for questions we're gonna ask, what we do, um, what we're expecting, what, but I, I think we should have at least, if we had a two-year calendar of what the, every day was like, it's sunny, they're not here. Tells you a lot.
Mhm. Yep.
I, I mean, I can go through Dial's texts to me, that I swear to God, every day, he would, no one here, or they're, they're on hub this, and then later in the day, I'd get that, this is where they ended up. You can sit and add how many feet they did.
Mhm. Oh, no.
And that really isn't his job.
No, no, no.
But by the same token, it came across his section, or basically that section of land, so, anyway.
He was extremely helpful, and the contractor stated that too. They needed water, and he got water for them, just, yeah.
Well, we appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
You bet, Rick.
Alright, uh, we got past that, we got our committee reports.
I think I have nothing. Let me check here. The only thing I would remind is, uh, Mother Food Pantry is Wednesday at the fairgrounds. If you wanna play, come on down.
Four thirty.
Four thirty is when the kickoff, they usually get started about four, four fifteen.
Okay. Yep, I got it now, okay. Alright, I had nothing, I, I got them, I can...
She's got hers and her phone's thing, we got the old school.
I had, I had nothing going on.
Uh, I missed a VA meeting that I had the other day. I missed it Thursday, I was recording it. It was on, I got it here. December thirtieth. I think that's when it was. Other night, I had nothing, it was Thursday.
I had no official meeting this past week. Anything else?
Yes, I have a few things.
Alright.
I should've given these to you last Thursday when you met, we did get valuation reports done. I have some here. I've got a few extra copies here too. So, um...
So, the good news?
Yeah, according to what we had last time, um, here's one for Kent also. Um, a year ago compared to this year, we went up about thirty-seven million dollars. So, we're done with this, that's just to check and see, you know, reasoning for this. My thoughts were, I knew that she raised residential, residential classes all went up, and some commercials did, so it's within reason. So, we have a little more, um, to work with, when we're putting our budgets together for this year. So, I thought you should have a copy.
Is there differential between one year and the next?
No, all I could do is just make you a copy of the current year, make you a compare. This is, yeah, current, and this is, this is the year we're in, and this is for next year.
Okay, so this is what we're looking at.
It's for taxes for twenty-one.
So, A is current?
This whole sheet, it's for twenty-one.
Oh, okay, alright, right.
Yeah, this is showing the numbers that we could look at.
Yeah, column H is the value for computing tax rate, but over in column D, that's what you use for computing taxes.
Okay.
Did you take off your, um...
Homestead and all that stuff?
No, that comes later on, under tax, utilities come off of there. So, if you're looking for some particular city, I can give you, if you want a copy of last, or current year, so I can give you a copy of that too, so you can do some comparison. But the overall was up by thirty-seven million, so, that helps.
That does help.
Yep. Um, did have one of these sheets that I need to inform you, that's a property that, um... I'll just let you share that. Um, received from ISAC, um, it's called a Nineteenth Amendment Centennial Commemoration. Some counties are passing a resolution, um, for women's suffrage. Didn't know if you guys were interested or not, if you wanted me to put one together. Um, they just sent it out to all the counties and said, if you're interested, um, this is what it looks like. Other than that, I don't have anything for you. Share that one with you two.
So, in really simplistic term, which I need those simplistic terms, we have how many more dollars from the past fiscal year to work with?
Um, as far as valuations go, thirty-seven million.
As far as valuation?
But then that, yeah, but then that calculates down to tax rates when we start working on our numbers.
Right.
Budget sheets will go out this week, I will give them, um, I think we talked like ten days to get them back to us, um, so that we can start working on them on your side, so.
Okay.
There's a lot that'll need to be done to it, and then we have that extra hearing in there this year, if we go over two percent, um, so we're gonna need to get things done a little quicker this time around.
That sounds like someone just cracked the whip.
It does.
Alright.
Me too, I don't have to work that hard, get them going, yeah.
Good deal.
Yep.
Well, anything else from anybody else?
I would make motion to adjourn. We're done.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.